Good evening ladies and gentlemen, you're watching NDTV. Sixteen opposition parties including the Congress Party, TMC, RJD, Samajwadi Party and Shiv Sena, UBT have demanded a special parliament session today to discuss Operation Sundur. Now, a joint letter was sent to the Prime Minister today following an India bloc meeting in Delhi. While the DMK signed the letter, midst the meeting, the Amarpee Party has sent a separate letter. Now, the NCPSP did not join the meeting, Supriya Sule is away, leading a delegation. The TMC has proposed holding the session in June after diplomatic delegations return. Now, Operation Sundur involved deep strikes in Pakistan and POK targeting terror camps and air bases. Sources in the government have made it clear that since the monsoon session is all set to be convened in July and this and special session is futile in that regard and all that needs to be discussed can be done as part of regular parliament session. Meanwhile Rahul Gandhi has accused Prime Minister Modi of halting Operation Sundur under pressure from Donald Trump who claimed credit for brokering an India-Pakistan ceasefire. Now, the BJP has refuted this asserting Pakistan backed for the ceasefire and accused the Congress Party of undermining national security. Let's listen in to what Rahul said and how the BJP responded to this.
उधर से ट्रंप ने एक इशारा किया। फोन उठाया। कहा मोदी जी। क्या कर रहे हो? नरेंद्र सरेंडर और जी हजूर करके नरेंद्र मोदी जी ने ट्रंप के इशारे का पालन किया। Seventy-one की लड़ाई में seventh fleet आई थी, हथियार आए थे, aircraft carrier आया था। इंद्रा गांधी जी ने कहा, मुझे एक जो करना है, मैं करूंगी।
प्रधानमंत्री नरेंद्र मोदी जी के नेतृत्व में भारत ने पाकिस्तान के आतंक के आकाओं को मुटोड़ जवाब दिया है। जिसके बारे में सलमान खुर्शीद से लेकर, शशि धरूर से लेकर, हर कांग्रेसी नेता भी कह रहा है और पाकिस्तान खुद प्रूफ दे रहा है। परन्तु Rahul Gandhi को इससे चिड़ीसी लिए है क्योंकि Rahul को खुशी तभी महसूस होती है जब कांग्रेस पार्टी के नेता आतंकवादी हाफिज सहित को हाफिज सहित जी बोलते हैं और 26-11 आतंकवादी हमले के बाद में कांग्रेस पार्टी पाकिस्तान के भर हमला करने के बजाय डॉजर डॉजर खिरती है।
So, the questions we asked tonight, is the opposition justified in demanding a special parliament session or is it just playing politics? Now, is the centre shying away from some very valid questions on security losses or addressing them the way matter centred around national security should be addressed? Won't talking about national security at a time like this also jeopardize safety and India's position considering the situation still remains tense? I also spoke to senior BJP MP and party vice president Jay Panda who led an all-party diplomatic delegation on Operation Sundur. You can catch that conversation later on that show. Before I bring in my guest on today's debate, let's also listen in to what RJD's Manoj Jha said today.
पहलगाम वास नॉट इंडिविजुअल पेंस ऑफ़ डी फैमिलीज़ व्हो लॉस डी नियर एंड डियर वंस। ये पूरे देश की सामुहिक पीड़ा थी। पूरा देश हमकी भावना से सोच रहा था, वी। और उसके बाद Operation Sundur। हमकी भावना से सोचने के बावजूद कुछ चिंता के लक्षण हुए। तो प्रधानमंत्री जी से ये गुजारिश की गई है। कि प्रधानमंत्री जी इतिहास में से छोड़ाते हैं। जब आपके व्यक्ति को कोई चीज़ आहत करे ना करे, देश को आहत करता है। और जब देश आहत होता है, तो संसद ही है क्योंकि दलों के दायरे से ऊपर है। पहलगाम वास नॉट इंडिविजुअल पेंस ऑफ़ डी फैमिलीज़ व्हो लॉस डी नियर एंड डियर वंस।
Sixteen to seventeen parties, sixteen parties have written a letter to the Prime Minister demanding, seeking, asking for a special session of parliament.
Well, India's multi-party delegations are heading back home after this massive diplomatic exercise of explaining India's position with regard to Operation Sundur. With me is Jay Panda who is BJP MP and also BJP's National Vice President. Thank you, Mr. Panda, for speaking to NDTV. You went to some of the most difficult countries because these are countries like Saudi Arabia, Bahrain, Kuwait and Algeria. These are countries which have historically had, you know, have supported Pakistan. How was your experience? What are your best takeaways?
Our job was to take the message forward about the new normal. Because we've been in this cycle of cross-border terrorism right from 1947 when Pakistan after partition sent the first cross-border terrorists into Jammu and Kashmir. And we've tried everything else in the past, including restraining ourselves. We didn't react after Mumbai, that has changed. And that message is received loud and clear that we will retaliate. We have called their nuclear bluff and exposed it as fake. We will impose a very heavy cost on them. We will take this forward with economic sanctions on trade, on shipping, on visas, on water. All of this intended to push Pakistan in the right direction, to change its policies of supporting terror.
Mr. Panda, but you know, when you talk about the FATF, do you feel that there was positive response of putting Pakistan in the grey list of the FATF? And also economic sanctions, these are, you know, countries with a lot of influence on the OIC which has also been misused by Pakistan. Did you see any positive response coming on that front?
Yes, absolutely. And let me put this in context. So, all these four countries have themselves been victims of terror. And they've all taken not only strong stands but very strong actions against terrorist groups. Algeria, for instance, has actually had terror attacks by Pakistani-trained terrorists back in the 90s. So, they understand exactly where we are coming from. Another thing is, you know, Pakistan has tried to cultivate these nations as a fellow Islamic country. But there's been a huge divergence. Now, while Pakistan encourages jihadis and, you know, churns out these fundamentalists and then funds them, trains them, arms them, these countries have been on an opposite path. They have cracked down against fundamentalism. Secondly, these countries have in the past given financial aid to Pakistan which they have seen being misused. And you know the unity that our delegation represents. Between the eight members representing different parts of India, different religions of India, different languages of India, different parties in government and opposition and yet with a single voice had a huge impact.
So, how was that experience tell us? Because you know, while you were there, there was a lot of politics playing out on Operation Sundur. The opposition has been saying that the government has politicised this issue. In fact, today Rahul Gandhi has also said that it was one tweet by Trump which made the centre surrender and this whole demand for special session. How do you see the opposition's position on this?
I think in the, in the search for Chakpata news, sometimes perspective is lost. The reality is that not only is all of India united on this, every section of society, but even in the polity, everybody, even the Congress Party's members were out there speaking up for India on various delegations. I think you're referring to two or three frustrated individuals and I wouldn't call them the opposition in its entirety because members of their own party were going and batting for India. So, let's not get carried away by the frustrations of some individuals who've tried repeatedly and failed. You really have to see the respect that these nations have for India and for its leadership, particularly Prime Minister Modi. For you to recognise what a fallacy it is for somebody to try and make, take such cheap shots. I don't want to get drawn into that because right now is the moment that we must cherish and celebrate this unity in the polity and across the nation.
Mr. Panda, also, you know, once you're back, you had an important meeting with the EAM. So, clearly this is going to be a journey in progress. Tell us what more can come out of this because you've come back with learnings. How do you expect all of this to be put in practice? What is going to be the way forward?
We had a very fruitful discussion with Dr. Jaisankar. And of course he had been keeping track because these were official delegations and our embassies were coordinating and giving updates. But it was also important to hear from us, our first-hand, our first-hand experience and feedback. And one of the biggest takeaways is all these nations want to work together with India. As I said, we've already had military cooperation, joint military exercises have been ongoing for the last couple of years. They want to take that forward. They are seeking Indian investment and access to Indian markets. But most importantly, they want to work closer together with India on the global stage, including in many multilateral organisations. And some of these nations are members. For example, two of the nations we visited are currently members of the United Nations Security Council.
My last question, did you also face the challenge of a perception war? Because the international media has also been writing things about the India-Pakistan conflict in a very different way. Do you think that was some, that was a challenge that you faced while you were in Saudi Arabia, for instance?
Not in the least, you know. Various countries and various, you know, outlets have their own axe to grind. Now, these, the leaderships of these nations are well-versed in real politic. They understand what's what. You know, they understand very well that even today Pakistan's history books teach that they won the 1971 war despite losing East Pakistan which became Bangladesh. So, Pakistan's propaganda doesn't last very long. So, yes, they tried a very energetic propaganda war. But you will see today, for the last few days, many Pakistani commentators, including politicians, including journalists, including activists, influencers are openly speaking out, questioning their own government. Because all their claims are falling flat because Pakistan hasn't been able to prove any claims. Whereas the fact that India did damage Pakistan's military facilities after they escalated. We initially targeted only the terrorists, that's our intention. The fact that we damaged their military bases can no longer be hidden. The people of Pakistan have experienced it, are seeing it today. So, no, these nations are very, you know, very familiar with Pakistan's old tricks. And, you know, many, many nations have, all these four nations have given very strong statements after April 22nd, condemning specifically the terrorist attack on India. And I'm quite positive that going forward, we are going to see good developments on this front.
Thank you, Mr. Panda, for speaking to NDTV. That was Jay Panda, BJP National Vice President, also an MP who led a, led a very important delegation to Saudi Arabia, Bahrain and other countries. Speaking about Pakistani propaganda that always falls flat, something that West Asia is also familiar with. With camera person Manush, this is Vasudha Venugopal for NDTV. So, also joining me now is Congress MP Dipinder Hudda. Thank you, Mr. Hudda, for speaking to NDTV. What made sixteen opposition parties come together, sir, to write this very important letter demanding a special session of the parliament on Operation Sundur? Because the government is saying that it has with, you know, all-party meetings, multi-party delegations. It is saying that it's made the process democratic.
आपको याद होगा कि जब हमारे देश पे ये आक्रमण हुआ, पहलगाम के अंदर आतंकी हमला हुआ, उस समय सभी विपक्षी दलों ने पूर्णतय सरकार का समर्थन देने का की घोषणा कारी और कहा कि हम सरकार के साथ हैं। सरकार जवाबी कार्रवाई करे और कोई भी कदम सरकार उठाएगी, हम लोग साथ हैं। और हम सबको, हर देशवासी को अपने देश की फौज पे गर्व है और Operation Sundur में जिस तरह का पराक्रम दिखाया हमारे देश की फौज ने। हम, हम अपने देश की फौज को बधाई देते हैं, उनको नमन करते हैं कि ऐसा पराक्रम शायद दुनिया में दूसरा उदाहरण नहीं देखने को मिलेगा। लेकिन अब क्योंकि ceasefire की घोषणा और वो भी पहले अमेरिका द्वारा की गई, उसके बाद सभी विपक्षी दलों ने और कांग्रेस पार्टी ने, Rahul Gandhi जी ने ये मांग उठाई, हमारे राष्ट्रीय अध्यक्ष मलिक अर्जुन जी ने मांग उठाई और सभी बाकी विपक्षी दलों ने भी अलग-अलग ये बात उठाई कि अब एक special session, विशेष संसदीय सत्र बुलाया जाए। और उस विशेष सत्र के माध्यम से सबसे पहले तो हमें एक मौका मिलेगा सभी देशवासियों के चुने हुए सांसदों को कि हम एक स्वर में अपनी देश के सशस्त्र बलों को धन्यवाद करें, उनका आभार व्यक्त करें और एक स्वर में एक संदेश जाए कि 140 करोड़ का देश अपने सशस्त्र बलों के साथ खड़ा है। उसके साथ-साथ जो सारी घटनाक्रम है, पहलगाम का आतंकी हमला, Operation Sundur, उसके बाद अमेरिका द्वारा घोषित एक ceasefire और उसके बाद जो ये प्रतिनिधि संसदीय प्रतिनिधि मंडल सारे विश्व में गए हैं, ये सारी घटनाक्रम पे सरकार, बिंदुवार सारी बात रखे और चिंतन और मनन हो कि जिस लक्ष को लेकर हमारी फौज ने ये पराक्रम दिखाया, आतंकवाद का की समाप्ति, क्या उस लक्ष को प्राप्त करने में हमें सफलता मिली? इस रूप से क्योंकि पाकिस्तान को क्या अलग-थलक हम कर पाए? दुनिया में क्या पाकिस्तान को इस समय किसी ने मदद का हाथ बढ़ाया? ओके। और अगर यदि बढ़ाया और अलग-थलक करने में कितनी हमें सफलता मिली? और आगे हम कैसे पाकिस्तान को अलग-थलक कर पाए ताकि IMF जैसी संस्थाएं? जो अर्बो डॉलर, अर्बो डॉलर के जो रेंड पाकिस्तान को जहां से मिले और बाकी बहुत से देशों ने जिस तरीके से, तो ये पाकिस्तान की मदद का इस समय मदद के लिए आगे आए, किस तरीके से उसको रोका जाए, क्या आगे रणनीति बने? इस पे चिंतन करने की, मन्तन करने की आवश्यकता है, देश की संसद को एक संयुक्त रणनीति बने कि आगे कदम कैसे बढ़ाए जाएंगे? आज तो हमारी फौज ने आतंकवादियों के सारे ठिकानों को नष्ट कर दिया। लेकिन यदि पाकिस्तान की इस तरह मदद की जाएगी बाकी मुल्कों द्वारा, तो क्या आगे पाकिस्तान दोबारा से आतंकवादियों को शह देने का कार्य नहीं करेगा? ये कई प्रश्न हैं। और साथ में मैं समझता हूं कि रणनीति केवल कुटनीति, रेशनीति, संयुक्त रूप से तैयार, तैयार भी हो।
Donald Trump की जो बात कर रहे हैं Rahul Gandhi, saying that उन्होंने एक interference किया था और fighter jets की जो बात कर रहे हैं, saying that you know, Indian fighter jets were down. External affairs minister ने इस बात को clarify किया है, DGMO से भी इस बात को clarify किया है कि ceasefire completely bilateral था। इस टाइम पे पार्टी इतनी ज्यादा insistent ये combat losses और ये ट्रंप के पोजीशन पर क्यों है?
देखिए, जहां तक ट्रंप, Donald Trump की बात है। Donald Trump लगातार 12-13 बार अपने दावे को बार-बार विश पटल पे बार-बार रिपीट करते हैं और कहते हैं कि हमने व्यापार की धोस दिखाकर हिंदुस्तान और पाकिस्तान का समझौता कराया। एक बार तो उनकी इतनी हिमाकत हो गई कि उन्होंने कश्मीर तक को, जिस कश्मीर पे कोई विवाद ही नहीं, कश्मीर हमारा अभिनय हिस्सा है और कश्मीर पे कोई चर्चा के गुंजाय खाई नहीं है। मगर Donald Trump, कश्मीर को भी एक बार अपनी व्यक्ति में लेके आए और लगातार वो हर रोज रिपीट कर रहे हैं अपनी बात को। इस अमेरिका की ऐसी हिमाकत जो बार-बार ये कहे और पाकिस्तान को बराबर तोल रहे हैं हिंदुस्तान से, बहुत बड़ा अंतर है, पाकिस्तान आतंकवादियों को पोषित करने वाला देश है और हिंदुस्तान आतंकवादियों के खिलाफ लड़ाई लड़ने वाला देश है और उसको अमेरिका के राष्ट्रपति बराबर तोले, बार-बार तोले, तो ये मैं समझता हूं स्वीकारी स्थिति है। और इस बारे में मैं समझता हूं कि एक संदेश जाए, संसद के माध्यम से संदेश जाए कि अमेरिका अगर इस प्रकार से, अमेरिका की तरफ से भाषा बोली जाएगी तो हिंदुस्तान वो स्वीकार नहीं करेगा। क्या हमारी फौज बार-बार जो बोलते हैं, हमारी फौज का पराक्रम किसी देश के दबाव में या व्यापार के दबाव में हमारी देश के पराक्रम, की फौज के पराक्रम को तोला नहीं जा सकता। और अमेरिका, ये वही अमेरिका है, 1971 में भी इसे अमेरिका ने कहा था इंद्रा जी को और हमारी देश की सरकार को, कि आप बांग्लादेश के अंदर अपने फौज मत, फौजी मत भेजिए, हम अपना सातवां लड़ाकू बेड़ा ढाका में पहुंचा रहे हैं। और इंद्रा जी ने जवाब दिया था उस समय कि 20 दिन के बाद आपका जब तक सातवां लड़ाकू ढाका पहुंचेगा, सातवां लड़ाकू बेड़ा, आप ढाका में आपका स्वागत, पाकिस्तान के फौजी नहीं, तीरंगे झंडे के नीचे हिंदुस्तान के फौजी करेंगे। ऐसी अमेरिका, ऐसे अमेरिका की ये हिमाकत कि आज पूरी दुनिया में ढिंडोरा पीट-पीट के क्योंकि हमारे देश की भावनाएं जुड़ी, जो हर बात व्यान देते हैं आज के दिन, मीडिया, सोशल मीडिया के माध्यम से पूरी दुनिया में एक-एक व्यान अमेरिकी राष्ट्रपति का जाता है। तो इस बात को गम्बीरता लेने की आवश्यकता है और यही हमारे नेता Rahul जी ने जो बात कही है, वो इसी संदर्भ में कही।
Right, Mr. Hudda, मेरा आखिरी सवाल, BJP का कहना ये है कि कांग्रेस जो है पाकिस्तान की भाषा बोल रहा है और हमारे जितने भी आर्म फोर्सेस हैं, उनके efforts जो गए हैं इस Operation Sundur में, उस efforts को undermine करने की कोशिश की जा रही है।
देखिए, बिल्कुल गलत। सबसे पहले सरप्रथम, हमारे देश के पराक्रम पे हर हिंदुस्तानी को गर्व है। 140 करोड़ का देश हम नमन करते हैं और विशेष सत्र की मांग भी हम इसलिए कर रहे हैं। विशेष सत्र में पहला प्रस्ताव हम लेके आएंगे कि हिंदुस्तान की फौज, दुनिया की सर्वश्रेष्ठ फौज है और Operation Sundur में जो पराक्रम दिखाया है, वो अधूती है। उसके उदाहरण दुनिया के अंदर दिए जाएंगे, इसीलिए हम देश की फौज का और देश के सशस्त्र बलों का हम आभार प्रस्ताव भी लेके आएंगे विशेष सत्र में। लेकिन उसके साथ-साथ
Why do you have a special session for that, sir? वो तो नॉर्मल सेशन भी हो सकता है। नहीं, ये तो नॉर्मल सेशन में भी तो हो सकता है और मौन सेशन तो है जुलाई 10 से शुरू हो जाएगा तो
आपकी, आप, 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 अगर हम अपने देश की इतिहास को देखे, तो 1962 का जो युद्ध था, जब 1962 का युद्ध चल रहा था, युद्ध के बीचों-बीच, अटल बिहारी बाजपेई जी ने मांग कारी, तत्कालीन प्रधानमंत्री जवाला नेहरू जी के समक्ष की एक विशेष सत्र बुलाया जाए। और आपको याद होगा 21 नवंबर को विशेष सत्र बुलाया गया 1962 में। तीन दिन सत्र चला और उस सत्र के 10 दिन के बाद ceasefire उस युद्ध का हुआ। और उस सत्र में खुले रूप से सरकार की आलोचना भी हुई, कहीं तैयारी की कमी रही हो, कई बहुत सी ऐसी चीज़ें विपक्ष के उस समय के सांसदों के माध्यम से रखी गई। क्योंकि हमारा देश लोकतंत्र है, लेकिन हमने एक जिम्मेदार विपक्ष की तरह जब तक ये ऑपरेशन चला, तब तक सरकार को पूरा साथ और समर्थन दिया, कोई एक press conference भी नहीं कारी। आपको याद होगा, 26-11 में, मुंबई में जब ऑपरेशन चल रहा था, उस समय भी तत्कालीन गुजरात के मुख्यमंत्री पहुंचे थे, उन्होंने एक press conference कारी थी।
Okay.
ऑपरेशन जब चल रहा था, लेकिन इस बार विपक्ष ने पूरा साथ इस सरकार का दिया, मगर हमारा साथ देश की फौज के साथ है, हम देश के तीरंगे के साथ खड़े हैं, हम देश के सशस्त्र बलों के साथ खड़े हैं। और जब, जब देश पे संकट की घड़ी आई तो हम सरकार के साथ भी खड़े थे। लेकिन हम किसी दल के साथ नहीं खड़े हो सकते। दल में और देश में अंतर आपको समझना होगा, आज आने वाले समय में किस तरीके से पाकिस्तान को अलग-थलक किया जाए? क्या हम कर पाए? यदि उसमें पूरी सफलता नहीं मिली तो क्या रणनीति बने, क्या कुटनीति बने? इस पे मन्तन देश की संसद में नहीं होगा तो और कहां होगा? आप देख रहे हैं कि सरकार के नुमाइंदे, तमाम दुनिया की अलग-अलग देशों में, राजधानियों में कई इन मसलों पे अपने, अपनी बातें रख रहे हैं। जब वहां रख सकते हैं तो हमारे देश की खुद की राजधानी में और संसद में देशवासियों के सामने भी ये बातें रखी जाए और आगे आने वाले समय की रणनीति बने ताकि आतंकवाद दोबारा ना पनप पाए और आतंकवाद को शह देने वाला पाकिस्तान किसी के, किसी का समर्थन दुनिया में दोबारा ना जुटा पाए। इन बातों को, इन लक्ष्यों को लेकर हम ये विशेष सत्र की मांग कर रहे हैं।
Right, thank you, Mr. Hudda, for joining us on NDTV. Thank you so much for speaking to us. Also joining me now is Nalin Kohli of the BJP. Mr. Kohli, you heard what the Congress MP had to say. He was one of those MPs who actually, you know, has formulated this letter that was given to the PM today, that was actually written to the Prime Minister today demanding a special session. He is saying that, you know, we just want to pay tributes to the armed forces. This is not to ask questions of the armed forces, but this is to basically discuss what is the way forward. How do you respond to that?
They are nice sounding words, but do they mean it? I mean, let's really pick up what Dipinder ji said. हम देश के साथ है, दल के साथ नहीं। We are with the country, not a party. And look at what Congress leader after leader has said, for example on Mr. Shashit Harut, which has led to Mr. Salman Khourshid saying, is it so difficult to be patriotic? I mean, if you are standing with the country, then what is the logic of running down? People from your own party who are part of the all-party delegation taking India's point of view across the world. So, there is a great dichotomy, a great disparity between the words, the great lofty ideals that they are professing and what seems to be the reality of what they speak on a daily basis. Point two, what is the India alliance? Is it an alliance that has ever concretized? Do they have an office, an identity, an election symbol? A commonality of thought, a commonality of objectives? A commonality of what are they opposing even Prime Minister Modi and his government for? Have they contested elections together? No. They are political parties who decide to meet and certainly they can meet, but they are only meeting over a cup of tea from time to time. Why should this presumption not be made? That the Congress party is finding that its demands are not resonating. So, they have decided to wide, sort of widen the scope and make it seem that the whole country wants a discussion.
Right. The whole country was with the government with Is for a special session, when the government has actually walked that first step, you know, gone a mile ahead saying that, you know, we will send multi-party delegations, we will have all-party meetings after Pahalgam terror attack and also after Operation Sundur. And what would be so problematic about a special session? You know, this could also add to the fact that the government is trying to include all voices, isn't it?
Well, Vasudha, you asked the right question. Then if you wish to pay tribute, do you need a special session? If somebody needs to do good, somebody needs to speak good, do they need to put a condition precedent to it? That I will speak good only when I am in a special session of parliament? I mean, in fairness, let's look at all the questions that the Congress party and its top leadership has asked in the aftermath of Operation Sundur. I'm sure, if you do an analysis of how it has carried on the media channels, one significant part of some of the statements would be in Pakistan. I mean, actually, the Pakistani establishment or the media has used the Congress party and its leaders' statements to sort of justify their narrative against India. Let's take again the Congress party and a little bit of history. Mr. Rahul Gandhi met the Chinese ambassador while Doklam was happening and the Chinese had intruded into India. It's the Congress party that has MOU or an understanding on an agreement with China and Turkey. The country is without any government involvement, rising to the occasion and saying, no tourism with Turkey, no trade with Turkey. And the Congress spokespersons were playing passing the mic. When the question came to them, why have you got an office in Turkey? That's why I said, very nice sounding lofty ideals[1571.40]
that have nothing to do with the conduct that we are seeing so far.
But, Mr. Kohli, it is, it is allegations that it's the BJP that's politicizing Operation Sindoor. In fact, they are saying that it's BJP leaders who are talking about Operation Sindoor in a way that it's being politicized. The TMC has also raised a similar allegation. Is that something that you think the BJP is doing?
Not at all. I think the TMC has much to worry about, since elections are around the corner in Bengal. And on a daily basis, given the kind of news reports that are coming from there, the TMC must, has a different objective. It would be liking to divert attention. The Congress party's objective would be little different. They would probably like to build on the narrative that they are building in terms of attacking or not believing the armed forces, attacking the government, which they have always done consistently. They did it after Balkon, they did it after the surgical strikes. They're doing it after Operation Sindoor. So, at least we have to grant it to the Congress party. They are consistent in disbelieving the armed forces. Even though they say we have great faith in the armed forces, we have great faith in national flag and we stand by the government in times of crisis. But they have consistently followed the same pattern. So, I think this is a political exercise. It is really not borne by any core positive intent. If they really care about all these issues, they can certainly raise it under parliamentary rules while parliament is in session.
Okay. That's fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Kohli, for joining us on NDTV. We also have Bhavya Narasimha Murthy of the Congress party. We also have Sajin Kumar, who is a political analyst. Bhavya, why does the Congress party or the opposition parties, why do they need a special session to ask these questions? There are multiple sections which actually permit discussions on a variety of topics in the regular parliament session. The monsoon session is about to begin anytime soon, in July, just less than a month to go for it. Why is this demand for special session of the parliament so important to your party?
When the attack happened in Pahalgam, there was a multi-party meeting that happened. Did Narendra Modi attend that meeting? No. After the ceasefire or during, I think, the whole Operation Sindoor, when the multi-party met, did Narendra Modi attend the multi-party meeting? No. Even right after Pahalgam, he came and he, he went to Bihar to address some rally. Not even met the victims, right? This all of his no. The second question is, in the beginning, I still remember Narendra Modi making a statement that they have left, they have given complete autonomy to army to take the decision to go, you know, after the terrorist, after the Pahalgam attack. But who announces the ceasefire? So, the ceasefire decision is given to Trump. But the action to be taken, that decision was given to army. All of this happened and at least 12 times, 12 or 13 times, US president has said that, you know, he brought trade and made both India and Pakistan agree to a ceasefire. Did Narendra Modi even make one statement against it and say, no, this was not the case? No, that is an American precedent. His voice matters at a global stage. What about the respect that our country and what about the sacrifices of our Indian army or, you know, navy and air force? Don't you think he let us down? First thing. And now when we ask for a special session, even to give a tribute, what is wrong? Don't you think our army or our armed forces deserve a special tribute inside the temple of democracy? Yes, they do. Why are you so against a special session? They deserve a special session. We, and here, the MPs are the representatives of people. They have a duty, they have a duty, no, no, I have one more point to finish. They have a duty to ask the questions that are in the minds of the people, because they have elected them.
Okay, okay, okay.
Narendra Modi has fear in addressing press conference. We agree. He is even scared of addressing parliament now.
MPs are representatives of people, they deserve to ask the questions that they're elected to. Ask in rallies. What is wrong in this special session? But you think that this is something that the government will think about, considering that it is actually saying that it is, it's made this process very consultative. It's made this process democratic by sending out multi-party delegations, also convening these all-party meetings?
You know, this is very paradoxical, because if you want to praise the valor of Indian armed forces, you should not do it aggressively and with multiple ifs and buts. Do it. And there is no need for a special forum to pay you tribute, you know, that can be done. To the demand for a special session, otherwise it's fine. But the point here is that this very obsession with Modi should declare that it's not the Modi versus Rahul Gandhi issue, it is an India versus Pakistan issue. Regarding the bizarre tweet by President Trump, there already have been official clarification that the ceasefire was bilateral. Similarly, there was also this all-party delegation, which is, which has done a commendable job across the, abroad, across the globe in various countries, and they have come back. And also within Congress, we see.
Okay, we've lost Sajin. Bhavya, you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I'm surprised he is even saying why the obsession with Modi. Who's the prime minister of this country? Who is answerable? Who has the highest power in this country?
To be fair to the prime minister, every time he addressed a public rally after Pahalgam, he has said that the country has spoken in a unified voice, the political class has been united.
Okay. The first thing is, he needs to address the press first. We understand he's scared of press. Have you, any of, any of you, you know, even NDTV, ever had an open press conference with Narendra Modi? No, fine. He's scared of it, fine. But why is he even scared of facing parliament? That's his basic duty as an MP. As a, as a prime minister of India, that is his utmost duty.
Okay, Bhavya, I think the special session of the parliament is what happens. Could give us some answers to this.
And the way this BJP is saying that they don't need a special session, don't you think our armed forces deserve a tribute in the temple of democracy?
They just think that because the session is anyway going to get convened in the next 10 to 15 days.
We want a special one for this.
Thank you, Bhavya, completely out of time. The opposition has stepped up its demand for a special session of the parliament over Operation Sindoor. Even as government sources have made it clear that it won't review such demands under pressure as there's lot at stake.